About a week out of sync due to weather, but we'll get started with this evening. So first of all, are there any items to be added to the agenda? And I do have a note here about the State Richmond Community Health Board/Community Wellness Fund Celebration. So we need to add that. Any other items to add to the agenda? Okay, can I have a motion to approve, please?
I'm going to make a motion.
Could I have a second or?
No, I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, the next is the review of the minutes from January 9th, 2023. So we just look for a motion to approve those minutes if there are no errors.
I move the approval of the minutes from January 9th.
Thank you. Could I have a second or?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the minutes from January 9th? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion's carried. So it brings us to the presentation section of our agenda, and we do have some folks joining us online. I believe we have Celeste Gotel and members from the Dalhousie Research Team who are working on the Acting Collectively project. So welcome to our presenters. Great to see you. And maybe I'll just hand it right over to you folks so you can do a little bit of a round of introductions and proceed with your presentation.
Okay, I think I'm going to start. So good evening, wardens and councillors. It's always wonderful to see you guys. I think no introduction is necessary for me. I'm Celeste, and I'm the local project coordinator. And it's my pleasure to welcome all the team from Dalhousie, who are going to actually be doing their presentation this evening. So with me, we have Dr. Grace Warner and Dr. Tanya Parker from Dalhousie University. And we have Brianna Wolf, who's the research coordinator, and Ria Supierre, who is the research assistant. So over to you, Grace.
Okay, thank you very much, Celeste, for that introduction. And when we were going to be presenting last week, before the snowstorm, Tanya Parker was in the Philippines, so she wasn't going to be with us. So I just want to briefly say, Tanya, do you want to put up the presentation? Or do you want me to continue on?
I think it's easier, Grace, for one person. Just plug through and we'll help with questions.
Okay, great. So we do have the PowerPoint. Well, Brianna, are you going to share? Who has the screen against that would be the question? Do you need me to share?
Yeah, I don't know, like, yeah?
Yeah, we would need you to share, I think, so we can see.
Okay.
Yeah, I share.
Let me see if I can share my screen. Sometimes, you know, there's always a, okay. We can share. I'll just put all particular things right. So, let's see if I can share. It's always about, there's always this kind of the issue, right? Of like, who can? Okay, let's see if we can get it going. I don't know. I have, let's see if this works. Because I'm just getting on the picture, but I'm getting desktop too. So I'm going to see if that works. Let's see if this works then. Oh, I think it is. Okay, great.
So we don't see a presentation.
But it's looking good on my side.
Oh, here it comes. Here it comes. There it comes. Yeah.
Is it there?
Yeah, we're all set. Thank you.
Yay, thank you so much.
It's a win.
This is success already. There we go. I'm going to just change it to the presentation mode now, right?
Yep.
That's good. Okay. So thank you very much for inviting us. So really happy to be here and to share what we have. So I'm just going to go into this. So what we're going to do is first is the big overview. Kind of refresh you on what the project's about. The project's local focus, that's going to be at Celeste. That's all about Celeste. And then we're going to do a little bit about the progress. So we'll kind of go from the big picture to the more kind of more details, which is, you know, for us, a little bit of the results, like, to kind of become a little bit more real on what we're doing. And we thank you for being, you know, partners in this project. We're really, I don't know, it's exciting to us. So first, the project overview. So we do consider this a, it's a community project, so we're all partnering on this. So as you can see, you know, yourself is participating in municipalities. So Richmond and Victoria and Cape Breton, regional municipalities. We have us at Dalhousie University. And then we have some initial, kind of like, startup with a brick social social, which is just a research network. And then older adults, of course, are a partner. And we're partnering with Northwood and PARF. And then also our funding is coming from the Department of Seniors and Long-Term Care and also NOSO Social Health. So we all feel as a team that we have a big obligation to be able to be very, to kind of find some useful information and to feed it back both to you and to the problem. So this is the big picture. This is our vision. I like to think of it in kind of three different sections. There's the individual, there's the municipal, and then there's the provincial. So first off, what we're doing right now, and Celeste's helping us with this, is to systematically collect the care needs at the individual level. So we're in the process of recruiting of adults, and I'll give you some more details on that right now. Older adults 65 and over in each of the three municipalities. For each one of those adults, there's an assessment, and those individuals are giving an individualized care plan. I'm sorry if I look over to the side sometimes, but I'm looking at my other screen over here. So these individual care plans will have information for the individual on independence, social connectivity, health and well-being. From that information, what we're able to do is aggregate it and then create these reports for the municipalities, what we're calling community profiles. And I'll get a little bit more into that with more detail. So the hope is that maybe you could identify the strengths and weaknesses of, you know, the community resources, get a better understanding of what the older adults in your municipality consider their concerns. And there's some linking about some of our questions to domains in the age-friendly communities. We're also going to be sharing all these results, of course, with NOSO Social Health and the Department of Seniors and Long-Term Care. We've already met with them several times, just to let them know what's going on. Because they're very interested to see what we can gather in the community. And they're very interested to see where they're going to be investing funds. They're already talking about that in terms of communities. Where are they going to create hubs for older adults, for services? You know, for example, in the valley, there's an entity called Cora, which is kind of a partnership with those social community colleges. And it's created a hub for older adults. So they're already looking at how they're going to do this in other places. So some of our research will inform them. And this is a slide about why. So the tool we're using, so it's an interview-type format, and it's 56 questions. And then it's from the aged care technology. So we call it the ACT tool. So that's the ACT tool. It kind of has these 56 questions, and each of those questions can be divided into the domain that I talked about previously, which is, you know, well-being, independence, or could be called social isolation, and then health, and, yeah, and social isolation. So WISPOR, it's called the WISPOR. This particular tool is from the UK, and it's been tested in over 50 countries, and it has over a million people over 30 years. So that's why we've chosen it, because there's some established use of the tool. The WHO has endorsed it, so that's why we particularly chose this tool. So the ACT assessments of questions, like the domains that I just talked about, well-being, independence, social engagement, health, can also be mapped onto age-friendly community domains. So even though I'm going to be presenting information kind of aggregated towards what we call the WISPOR, it can also, we can divide up those questions, and also we're getting that are indicative of age-friendly communities. I tend to talk right fast. I know we only have 15 minutes. I don't want to spend a lot of time with me presenting. I'd rather that we have a discussion, so that's why I'm going through it very quickly. But don't hesitate to interrupt me if I just kind of am going through things and you have some questions. So the overall goal of the project is to assess the usefulness and the feasibility of implementing what I, the ACT tool, in the three municipalities in Cape Breton. So, you know, Richmond, Victoria, and Cape Breton, regional municipalities. So now we're getting more into the details of what this is about. We plan to interview, or hope to interview, 480 community-dwelling older adults that are 65 years and older, yeah, from the three communities. And from those, you know, once again, it says there's the individual level, and then there's the community level or the municipal level, and then the provincial level. So the idea is, from those separate interviews, each one of those individuals will get individual action plans. And we'll see an example of that a little bit further on. Then we're taking an individual level, we're aggregating it as what we're calling profile of community needs and resources. And this is something we really wanted to talk to you about, in terms of what do you want in these community profiles? We don't have everything all packaged. We are waiting for some input from you to figure out what would be helpful to you in Richmond. And then we have an assessment. We are researchers, we're a little bit of a kind of evaluation narrative. So we do want to know if it works. It may not work. We don't know. We're testing it. We're testing, are they good questions? How are they, are they getting good information to people like the individual action plan? What do you think about the community profile? So there is an evaluation component to see, you know, what, if, our hope is that when we leave, when the researchers leave, we could, you know, have communities gather their own data. Because, as Celeste knows, a lot of individuals have been trained as ACT assessors. So this is a, so that's part of what we're doing also, is to evaluate. Did this work? What about it worked? What about it did not work? So now I'm going to go over to Celeste. So, Celeste, I'm turning it over to you. There you go.
Okay, as you all know, the municipality Richmond applied for an H-10 grant and were one of the successful recipients of the grant to do this project. And as they have in the past, they partnered with the Dr. Kingston Memorial Community Health Center, which has a, has a great reputation and is known for doing some really great work with supporting older adults. So they're actually kind of the operator, or if you will, on behalf of the municipality. And they brought me in because of my involvement with working with older adults to act as kind of a local community coordinator. So as Grace indicated, we have 10 trained assessors in Richmond County that are available to do the interviews. Three of those assessors are actually viable. Michelle Mcfee, for example, is one of our assessors, who you all know, is the Senior Safety and Social Inclusion Coordinator. And a few of the other assessors are folks that all of you would know and are known to people in Richmond County, many of whom are retired nurses, a couple of who are actually still doing some nursing. So I think one of the important things to mention in terms of the work here is that this does build very nicely onto the idea of an age-friendly community, which that has been identified as one of the priority areas in your newly revised strategic plan, to look at the services and programs you offer with an age-friendly lens. So when the time comes to actually prepare these reports, as Grace indicated, there'll be an opportunity for us to kind of dig down deeper in terms of some of the findings and align those with the different domains of an age-friendly community. One of the unique features in providing this in Richmond County is that we actually are, we do have a significant Acadian population, and we're uniquely positioned to be able to offer the interviews in both languages. And the Dow team has been very supportive in ensuring that we translate things. So those are just some of the key things that I wanted to mention. But of more importance is how you can support and promote this project. So I mean, if I was going to ask you, what if you wanted to say, well, how can we get behind this project? Well, my answer would be, like, you know, when you sell real estate, they say, location, location, location. Well, if you're going to sell this project, it's promote, promote, promote. Every opportunity that you have to talk about this project in the community with older adults, we know that there's over 3,000 people 65 years of age and older living in Richmond County, and we only need to recruit 150. So I guess I'm, you know, I think one of the ways that you can, as a council in Richmond County, is continue to promote the project. I thank you for what you've been doing to date. It's great that we're able to get all our social media information on the Facebook pages and also that you've all been very supportive when I've reached out to you and asked you to get some new posters up. Certainly, the Richmond Reflections has been running an ad, and we'll have it in by-able format for the next issue coming up. We did an interview at Tellio. We're going to continue to do a little bit more promotion there. We did get some really good media coverage as well locally, again, supported by the Dow team. And I guess, to me, one of the most important things is going to be word of mouth. Because what we're finding is that we're six months into recruitment, and I could tell you, although we've been very successful in Richmond County, and we'll be providing the numbers shortly, it's a, it's a slow go. So I think as people hear about it, and they know that it's not a painful process to be involved in this, that they'll be more likely to step up and volunteer. So that would be what I'd be asking all of you, is to really kind of, when you're, anytime you're meeting with somebody, just ask, have you heard about this project? And refer them to us, because we can provide them with more information to let them know more about it. So on that note, I think I'll just hand it back over, and then you can talk about some of the local numbers, perhaps?
Yeah, that's the hope, to make it a little bit more concrete. So the project progress. So these are, so far, these are Richmond County numbers. So we have two different graphs. One is the registered participants and the assessed participants. So I want to thank both Ria and Brianna for creating these graphs too. So, so far, we have 31 out of the hopeful 160 or 120 that we are able to recruit. So registered participants means that they have been screened to make sure that they are eligible, which means they have to be 65 years and older in these Richmond counties. And then they consented. And it is a research project, so we do need to get consent. So that's always the first step. After that, then they're handed off to an assessor. And so 24 of those, 24 have been assessed so far. So this is, we really started heading toward the proven in, I would say, end of November, beginning of December, would you say, Celeste?
Yeah, thereabouts. And I forgot to mention that interviews can take place in three different ways. They can be done on the telephone, or if somebody wants to do a Zoom one, we can facilitate that through our team at Dow. Or they can also be in-person, and we've actually made arrangements with 10 community locations who have graciously offered space if we need to, throughout the county, as far away as Brad Boys, to conduct in-person interviews with any of our assessors.
Thank you, Celeste. That's good information. Yes, and Celeste's been, Celeste's been working tirelessly to get this going. So those are the first numbers. And then we have an example. This is an example of the individual action plan, just so you can see something. So this is what the individual would get. They go through the 56 questions, and then they determine if they have a concern in each of these questions, like, for example, can you pee with glasses if worn? And then if they indicate they have some difficulty, and they indicate that this is a priority for them, then some resources that are in the database pop up. And Celeste and her team have been very helpful to comply as to what are the local resources. We've also connected with 2-on-1, so we've gotten resources from them. And so this is just an example of what the individual would get in terms of their action plan. So the idea is this can be given to them, they can share it with their doctor, they can go and act on these things, and see if, you know, see if it, you know, is helpful for them to identify. It also is helpful for identifying what's not available. So we know that there are never enough resources, so the idea is that we also can identify what are the concerns that don't have any resources attached to them. This is some of the data. This is some of the, you know, we don't have that many people right now, which is why we're trying to recruit more people, so we can give you better information about the individuals in Richmond County. So you see, the orange bar is well-being. The blue is independence. The darker blue is social engagement, and the yellow is health. So as the values for these scores, those are our WISPOR, is what I was talking about. So when you see that the turquoise, I guess, for independence, is at low risk. So those people that we've been interviewing so far are at a very low risk for problems of living independently. But if you look at the well-being, which is the orange one, then that one is that the people are that we've interviewed so far are at moderate risk for problems with well-being. So this just gives you some of the examples, what some of the data we can put together. And this what we get, like, now is the next one, which rips down into that. Because the well-being score was shown to be at moderate risk, this shows you a little bit of what we can get for this. So we can analyze this data based on a question level. So we know from this data that 91% of the individuals indicated they had difficulty with at least one question in the mental health domain. There are like six different domains of questions that we ask. 50% or 17 of the participants out of 34 had trouble sleeping, you know, within the past month. 41% had been suffering from a recent loss, bereavement. And 38% have had concerns about memory or forgetting. So this is just an example of some of the data that might be of interest in terms of what does this mean for the community? What are the people going through, and what resources might be available to address their needs?
Grace, just, I wanted to point out that what you just shared there, the number of participants, is reflective of Victoria and CBRM as well. Because we've actually got 24 completed, not 34, so just so that folks know that...
I apologize. So this is the whole piece of 34, apologies there, Celeste. Yeah, so, okay. Sorry about that. Looking ahead, I just figured you already have 34, so, you know. So, yeah, so this is, yeah, so this is the whole one. So there we go. So there we go. Sorry about that. Apologies. So, so the 32% of the population in Richmond County is 65 or older, so that is also an important feature in Richmond County. So we're collecting the data on the common concerns. And then what we really need to know is what you want in your profile? How do we, how should we aggregate the data in a way that's useful to do it? So that's one of the things that we do want to talk to you about, so that we can make sure we give you back something that you can use something with. So this is kind of what Celeste went through. So how can you help? We do want to recruit a variety of people. Right now, we're getting a lot more, as it's always happened with these kind of things, you're getting a lot more healthy, independent individuals. So we'd like to have a spectrum across Richmond County, of people who are having issues and people who are not having issues. We hope to have, that's why we want more people to within our spectrum. So any way that we can help with recruitment during this time, so we can get a little bit more people. I think it's the last few that's pretty most of these things, you know, that you've already discussed. Introduce, assess the project. Yeah, and this, I think the bottom line is, we really want to know what should be in the community profile too. So helping us to be able to, you know, give you what you want and make sure that we can get to a variety of people, to make sure that our numbers are representative of Richmond. And there's a lovely poster that's been created by the team. So, thank you very much, and I'm going to stop sharing, so I can look at you. There we go. Okay, good. There's everybody. I can see everybody's faces now. I know you have a lot to talk about, and it's evening. I'm sure you're already thinking about, you know, onto the next agenda. But if you have some time, just give us some feedback, that might be very, very helpful for that.
Sure, okay, thank you. So does anybody have questions for the team?
I do.
Yeah, sure. Councillor Melanie Sampson.
Great, thanks. The, the presentation was excellent. Excellent, thanks for that. So as you're talking about the participants, and we're talking about, like, accessing them and chatting with them, my feeling is, and I think you did sort of say something about, you know, that these were some of the more, for lack of a better word, healthy or active members of our, of our communities. And I'm, I would be interested to get more information from members of the community that perhaps struggle with different daily activities. And so I just, I, I struggle with how we can access the information from them. Like, my feeling is that a third-party person may be the answer to that. So when you talk about registering and you say, are they 65-plus and do they live in the county? But like, for example, if I wanted to do like a survey for my father-in-law's needs, for example, right? He couldn't have those chats with you, because he wouldn't hear you well enough to talk with you for an hour, right? But, you know, is there a way that we could do it, that if someone in that person's family was willing to sort of be the mediator or something, that we could do some surveys with those folks? Because I think they're the people that are really the most in need, and that we really need to find out what they need the most.
And I, I think I've talked enough, so I'm going to let Celeste or other, Tanya or come with the team. So I'll let, I'm sure we have the answers to this, so I'll let them talk.
That is an item that we've had extensive discussion on, Melanie, so thanks for raising the issue. There are provisions made that if somebody wants to accompany somebody like that, that they can actually be kind of that conduit of information. But it's important that the individual who is impacted is part of the interview process. So that was identified by a number of our assessors, many of whom you would know. There are people in the community that are very well-connected. Several of them have worked in long-term care and continuing care. So that can be arranged, and maybe that needs to be part of our promotions going forward. We may, may need to spend a little bit more time thinking about how we can start communicating that so that caregivers, or an adult child, or a spouse, or what have you, can also support an individual in participating in the interview.
Yeah, we have that ability. So people can either, A, you know, I mean, like, as Celeste says, we can go to the individual's home and do that, have it through phone, if that's okay. But in your situation that you were talking about, you know, that so, like, a wife or a child could be talking on behalf of someone else, and then we would market that that person is talking on behalf of someone else. So there are different ways of addressing that. But we do definitely want to get that person, get those people who have those issues, because, and they're the hardest to be able to get. So that's why, you know, recruitment is one of the hardest things. It's kind of like, first off the bat, it's always the people who are healthy and say, you know, this is, you know, something I'm really interested in. You know, if someone is having some difficulty, it's a bit harder to do these things. But, you know, whatever way we can make it easier for them, we will do it. Let's put it that way. We will do it to make it easier.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, for me, it's, you said 480 interviews over the three municipalities, is that correct?
That's right.
480 interviews over, I think the span is, well, we're hoping to do it like in, what? The project is three years. But we've done one year of engagement, but we do have two more years to do it. It all depends on, you know, how long it takes to be able to do it. And that's 480 for the three different communities.
Yes.
So Richmond is not, you know, just 480, but yeah, that's, that's our hope.
Yes, correct. So now is that divided equally, or is that from a percentage of the population, more or less? Could there be more in CBRM or the 480?
Why did we choose like 480?
Yeah, is it 160, is it 160 right across the board? Or is it?
It's 160 for each community.
Okay.
So to do equally. Of course, if you want more, you know, that's fine. And then it seems, some other people may not make that target.
Right.
So I guess that's, that's our goal, is to have 160 from each of the communities or municipalities.
Yep, cool. Thank you.
And I can see where, where you're getting at there, is that the population in Richmond County is considerably lower than CBRM, and you're absolutely right. But a particular note is that we're leading the pack. We've got the highest number of people who have actually participated. We've got the highest number of people who have actually participated, and so, you know, as I've often said to many people about Richmond County, it's the little engine that could.
Yeah, cool, awesome. What's that word you used, Celeste, promote, is that what you said?
Promote.
Yeah.
Promote, promote, promote.
Atta girl, atta girl.
All right, okay, well, I'm just keeping an eye on our clock, unless there's, uh, any other burning questions, I think we'll have to move on, but, um, thank you so much, um, to everybody on the call for joining us this evening, it was much appreciated, and I think this will help kind of get the word out as well, our, our, so our council meeting could not be livestreamed this evening because of a, I think, a, a technical restriction, but it is still being recorded and will be broadcast on Tellil, and that gets into a lot of people's homes, um, you know, in Richmond County, so that's another piece of promotion as well, so, yeah.
So, yeah, so on behalf of the, the local team and the project team, thank you for, for providing us the opportunity to talk about the project, and everybody knows how to reach me, so if you ever have any questions, please, I invite you to, to reach out, and, um, thanks for your ongoing support.
Great, okay, good evening.
Thank you, Senator, thank you.
All right. Nice to know we're leading the pack on this, it's really great.
Yeah, thirty-four and twenty-four are from us.
That's great.
It's pretty great.
Yeah.
And that was your first call with the Owls, and-
Yes.
-seemed to go very well.
The technology worked. Okay. All right, so we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, and I know, Councilor Sean Sampson, you had, um, you had some information you want to share, or some concerns to express, I think, about provincial snow clearing, so over to you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, so, yeah, again, I want to start by saying, I mean, this is not the first time we discussed this around this table, and I just want to stress that, again, I'm not knocking any local operators or local supervisors or anything like that. Uh, I think it, uh, takes a lot of courage and guts to get behind the wheel of a snowplow during a snowstorm, so hats off to those guys, but my concern is that, that this approach of so many hours after a snowstorm of, of clearing roads is, is putting lives at risk, putting people at risk, and, uh, and, uh, I've gotten many calls the last couple of storms, of people that can't get out of their lanes, people that can't get to work at Clearwater, you know, so it's, uh, it's a, it's a tough situation. Uh, like I said, I, you know, I, I know the approach right now is so many hours, uh, for one hundred series highways, so many hours for roads, and then so many hours for by roads, but when you're talking about twenty-four hours or so before you see a snowplow on a by road, it's, uh, it's, it's, you know, if it's snowing heavy, uh, you're, you're kind of putting the people in, in those lanes at risk, right? So, uh, I know the approach, and I spoke to our local MLA driver, and I know the approach is to open Highway two oh six and Highway three twenty on this island, uh, which means they go to the end of Bojerville, they go back out, uh, they go to the intersection, which is the intersection near my house, three twenty and two oh six, and go back towards three twenty, uh, so, you know, there's that road that's open, uh, to the end of Bojerville, and then back out, and then to my intersection, and back to the schools, uh, so there's no lanes open, you know, I forward you photos of, of, you know, the intersection at the St. Joseph's Credit Union Peregrine, uh, that, that road, uh, from the end of Bojerville towards Arishat is like a summer day, and, uh, the road going towards the bridge and ultimately Point and Little Lance is solid ice and snow-covered, you know, so, couple of weeks or, you know, last week or so, there's kids that didn't even go to school because their parents wouldn't put them on a bus, right? When Highway two oh six and three twenty were bare-paved, right, so, uh, you know, people that work at Clearwater, uh, you know, they got two kilometers of smooth sailing when they're going to work at six o'clock in the morning, uh, if they're coming out of the Point, or they're coming out of Little Lance, if they're coming out of Cape Le Round or Rocky Bay, um, they hit Highway three twenty, or they hit Highway two oh six at the Credit Union Peregrine, they got the stretch, so they got two kilometers, once they hit Veterans' Memorial Drive, it's no cover, and, uh, Cape Le Round is stone-covered, right, so, same thing with Route three twenty, if you're coming out of Rocky Bay, you get the Pondville Stretch, that's bare-paved or opened, and then the Low Road and Veterans' Memorial Drive, and Cape Le Round is not open, right? So, uh, yeah, for me, uh, my, my opinion is this, I mean, if it's, if it's not snowing that much, you know, it would allow us operators to, to go in these lanes, because the snow is not going to gather that fast if it's not snowing that much. If it's snowing pretty heavy, you have to get in those lanes every two times, because if you're waiting to go twenty-four hours, you're not getting in that lane with, you know, with any kind of emergency vehicle at all, right? I, I witnessed, and hats off to him, I don't know who he was, uh, but I witnessed, uh, one of the operators open Breakwater Road in Little Lance, um, all you could see was the sign that says maximum fifty, you couldn't see the base holding that sign, that's how high the snow was to the sign, and he, uh, he worked on that road for about fifteen minutes or so to try to get into that road, uh, because they hadn't been in there in twenty-four hours, right? So, if that's an ambulance or a fire truck, we all know what the result is going to be, right? So, it's, uh, I think it's, uh, I think it's a very dangerous game, uh, I think we're putting lives at risk here, and, uh, I would like to see the province, um, come up with a better approach. I don't know what that is, if it's more equipment, more operators, uh, I don't know, but, uh, I know that, uh, yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's something that's got to be addressed, in my opinion.
I, I will say, I heard from a counselor, from a constituent in, um, and actually your, your district councillor, Melanie Sampson, um, about snow clearing on the Evanston Road, has expressed some similar safety concerns, and, um, just, you know, happened to be able to connect with them just after the storm, and, um, you know, certainly, you're making a great point, um, I do, you know, I do wonder about how effective it is to be writing letters, um, when, you know, these policies have been in place for some time, and maybe we need to change our strategy and look for, you know, I, I know that some councils do a quarterly, quarterly meeting with, uh, Department of Transportation staff in their, in their regions, um, you know, maybe we need to, uh, pursue something like that. I mean, I think we do need to put it on the record if you have concerns, and if council thought it would be a good idea to, to write a letter, but I just wonder, what else can we be doing? I know we are all in touch with Department of Transportation staff individually on a regular basis, but maybe, uh, you know-
Yeah, well, I mean, if-
-dynamic would help.
For me, if you really want to hit home with the, the Minister of Public Works and our provincial government, um, I would ask them this question, I would say, I would ask, you know, what is the main focuses of the province today? And I think we'd all agree that it's healthcare, housing, and roads, and I think they got to come to realize that all those are linked to each other. We got very good groups and very good volunteers and hard workers that are trying to recruit and retain health professionals, uh, and they work very hard to do so, uh, but then they find that it's hard to find housing for these people. If they become lucky enough to find housing, and it's in a beautiful subdivision that they can get out of, or their kids can get on a bus safely to go to school, I think the provincial government has to realize that all these things are linked to each other, and if you don't improve the roads, where are we going to go, right?
Right.
So, I would like to see us write a letter to the Minister of Public Works and stress these concerns, and stress safety, and, um, again, you know, I've been told that, you know, if something would happen in, in one of these lanes and one of these roads, that they would dispatch a snowplow right away to get to this emergency. I've had this discussion with, uh, with our MLA, and I told them, um, you know, the prime example I can give him, uh, is one I witnessed myself, uh, when I was living on the high road, there was a tractor-trailer going to Clearwater, uh, stuck in the hill in Cape Le Round. Fortunately, it was just, I shouldn't say just lobster, but it had a refrigerated truck, right? So the reefer was on, the lobster wasn't getting affected, but the truck was there for an hour. So they did exactly that, they dispatched the plow, they come there, salt the bottom of the hill for that tractor-trailer to come down the hill, then it has to get around the tractor-trailer, salt the hill, salt the top of the hill for the tractor-trailer to get up the hill. That's an hour. If that's an ambulance, or that's a fire truck, and not a lobster tractor-trailer, someone's in deep trouble.
Yeah.
Someone's house is gone, or someone has passed.
Well, it's a great question.
So I, I, like I say, I, I hate to be that, you know, severe, but I think, um, it's eventually going to happen with this approach.
So councillors, would you be supportive of us putting a piece of correspondence together, um, for the minister, um, just expressing these concerns, and maybe with greater urgency, uh, increasing urgency than we have in the past, um, is that something?
I think, um, you know, I guess, uh, you know, in reference to some of Sean's comments, uh, you know, some, some I'll agree and some I'll, and before we answer that question, I, I think we'll, uh, just to put a little perspective on the, um, on the length of time, just the other night alone during the big storm, maximum traveling speed was about ten kilometers per hour in the snowplow because of visibility. When you look at, believe from the Maricopa Shad to go to the one oh four, and rate to the three twenty on one side of the road, you're looking at even, say, fifteen kilometers. So it's two hours one way, two hours back, so it took you four hours just to do that one road, before you even left to go onto a side road or an alternate route, the side that you've already plowed has almost a foot of snow back on it, or six, eight inches, and for that reason-
It was an extraordinary amount of snow.
Right, and, and visibility, it's not always the snow, it's visibility.
Yeah.
So you have to remember, if you can't travel any faster, then you can't plow it any quicker. So just to put it in perspective a little bit, now, I'm not saying in all cases, you know, that's the, uh, that's the deal, but one thing I think we would have to check before we, you know that saying, before you shoot yourself in the foot, you better make sure that the gun's not pointed, um, I would want to check to make sure that we're paying for what we're getting, I guess, or we're not getting more than what we're paying for, because I believe we do fund Department of Transportation, right, through-
Our contributions, right, our-
Yeah, like the municipality for, for maintenance.
Yeah, our municipality contributions.
Is our J-class roads or our K-class roads that are being plowed by transportation part of the cost, and if it is, then I think we really want to check, are we getting more than what we're paying for, or are we getting less than what we're paying for?
Okay. That's something we'd have to review for sure.
And I don't know, I'm just, once we open up that can of worms, if we're getting more than what we're paying for, then we better be, we better get ready for the repercussions of, that's your road now, and we're no longer even looking at it. That would be my concern.
Okay.
I don't think we're only talking about the roads that are municipally owned and serviced by-
Yeah, no, no, no.
-councillor, is that-
Talking about provincial.
We're talking about some of those that are provincial.
But, but, but most of these side lanes are not provincial.
No, most of them are. Like, we're, we're talking even dirt roads, like, I, you know what I mean, like even Locklomond, Framboise, Forest Shoe up that way, you know, these folks have to wait a long time sometimes, and it, it, it doesn't feel fair, but I understand that there's only so much equipment, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of kilometers to do, and I, I can't dispute that. Um, I, I can agree with their frustration, but the, the, the J-class roads, I don't think, they would only represent a small percentage of, of what we're talking about here. I don't think that has, uh, unless I misunderstood.
No, no, yeah, yeah. Uh, these are, these are provincial roads that are being followed by the provincial rules, right, twelve, twenty-four, you know, eight, twelve, twenty-four hours, right? Uh, and again, and, and I understand where you're going with Counselor Diggan, when, when, I see the snowplow coming, and all I can see is the caution light, and I can't see the plow itself because of wind and, and snow.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to be beyond the wheel of that thing, you know what I mean? I, I know where you're coming from, it's just for me, if, if, if it's smooth sailing and it's clear and you can see, um, and, and it's not snowing that, that much, when you're going to the end of the Point or the end of Bojerville, the end of the Lance, I feel there's no reason why you can't get in one of those lanes or two of those lanes, and then your second time around, finish the other two lanes that you didn't do, or whatever, but to, to avoid them for twenty-four hours straight and then try to pound your, your snowplow in there, like I, like I witnessed already, that's a, that's a tough one.
Okay, um, so I'm just looking for some direction at this point from folks?
Yeah, I'd like to put a motion forward, Madam Warden, to send a letter to our Minister of Public Works, just to, you know, what, to see what this approach is, or what we can do here. I'm sure we're not, we're not the only rural municipality, and, you know, yeah, we're not the only ones, right?
As a, just an alternative suggestion, I wonder if it would be possible if we were able to reach out to the MLA to maybe have a meeting with the minister at some point? I think that would be good for everybody to express their concerns, on more than just-
Yeah.
-snowplowing, like, you know, um, because, I mean, the, the government has been in place for a year and a half now, and it would be nice if, if we could have a face-to-face meeting rather than a letter, which whoever will respond to it, who knows?
Yeah, and I, I, I do agree with the, uh, you know, one, um, like everything else, it would be nice to have, you know, more operators, more coverage, more snowplows. Um, again, I, I, I do believe it is, you know, in our position here, um, we have to bump that rate back to our MLA and say, this is your job, and we need you to fix it. Um, really, because, again, we can sit around the table all day long, but he is our MLA for the province, and this is provincial, so again, you know, it comes to him, so if these, these guidelines and standards have been in place for many, many years, and I'm sure the province sat down and come up with them for a reason, now, do they meet our, our criteria and our requirements? Probably not. Can we get them changed? Well, we'll only know by having, you know, our MLA sit with us or sit with them and, and have that discussion.
And like you say, Counselor Diggan, is it more operators, is it more, uh, equipment? You know, what's it going to take, right? I, I know myself, as a teenager growing up in Simon's Cove, I mean, when, when the snowplow went to Little Lance, uh, that snowplow was gone for forty-five minutes before it returned to Simon's Cove, uh, because it did every lane, and, uh, when it got to Simon's Cove, it come down our lane and did that lane as well, uh, so I don't know where things went wrong, or I don't know where this all went sideways, is it more equipment, is it more operators? I'm not sure, you know, but again, uh, with that comes more cost, right, and more mandatory contributions to our province, but-
There's no question.
Yeah, but in the end, uh, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna find some sort of solution, right, before things go bad.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, in your letter, could it be an option to have a conversation with the local operations management to better understand their, um, how they triage and prioritize? Because as we understand the assets they have, and how they have to use it, and how they open it, and in what order, it may give us a better understanding of why it takes so long to get from here to there, et cetera, and, um, it gives you guys the tools as well, that when you're getting the phone call, that we can try and understand the true issue that is, you know, instead of just saying it's the province, well, this is what they're dealing with, and this is how they do it, like, are school bus routes the number one priority in the hospital, is that how they send their equipment out? I'm not sure, I know that's how they do it in other municipalities, they sit down with the school, uh, board every year, these are the routes for this year, because people move in and out of rural communities, and once the kids are gone off the road, that road goes to a lower priority, because they're not getting the kids off to school anymore.
Yep.
So-
But alternatively, that's where a lot of the people who are seniors with health issues tend to live, so it's-
Absolutely.
-you're just trading off one group of vulnerable people for another, really, so, you know?
But having that conversation, we can understand how they're doing it, because honestly, I, I, I don't know what the process is here, uh, with our region.
Okay, so, um, hearing then of an op, option to meet with staff, which I think we had done in our early years, uh, when we were first elected, so maybe time to do that again, um, I do, you know, but then there is a question of correspondence at the ministerial level, um, do we want to continue that, and, uh, note maybe the Deputy Warden's point with last meeting with her in the near future as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would be, I think I'd be more inclined to request the meeting, and we could maybe see if that could go through our local MLA.
Yes.
Only because I, I could be off-base here, but I feel like if we express the concerns and request a meeting, we'll get an answer pertaining to our concerns, but not a meeting.
Right, 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 yes, I, I understand what you're saying.
They'll pick the path of least resistance if, yeah, if presented with the options.
Okay, so then I guess the motion would be to request a meeting of council and, uh, Department of Transportation or Public Works, uh, staff, uh, in this region, and to further send a letter requesting a meeting with the minister. Would that summarize it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, someone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Sean Sampson, could I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Counselor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion on that? Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, um, so next item on the agenda, I have a couple of items to cover. Um, the first is a review of the Warden's council report. Um, and so this is just a new report format that I'm trying to give, I guess, you as councillors kind of an understanding of some of the, some of the things that I'm up to in the run of a, of a month. And what I figured I would do is we could treat it similar to, um, how we treat kind of, you know, the review of checks or whatever. So it's there. If you have questions about it, please feel free to ask me. I do need to make one correction on the report that I had shared. I did not make it to that last February tenth, uh, Burt Oil Lakes Biosphere Reserve Association meeting for a whole variety of reasons, including kinda shopping. So that was the only mistake on that report, but the rest are all, um, uh, you know, meetings or activities that I've undertaken. And I know we talked about letters of support and I'll, I'll include those on the Warden's report so then you can see them. Um, and, uh, and we don't need to wait, you know, for the full month cycle around council meetings, so. So any questions on the council report? Okay. Um, I also added, next item on the agenda was related to EMO communications. And, um, really, this was as a result of the last storm. As we have discussed at length, it was an awful pile of snow in a very short period of time. Um, and what I had noticed on, uh, on our social media, or on social media in particular, was, uh, that people were sharing, uh, some comfort, comfort station lists that were only for one district and not for another. So, um, so then the comments on it would, you know, were around, oh, well, why aren't there any, you know, comfort stations in District Five, you know, and they're only in District Three? What, what's that about? You know, so I think there was just some confusion around where comfort stations could potentially be set up. So I chatted with, um, Troy about that and our emergency management coordinator to talk about how we could maybe improve the communications to ensure there's no confusion. Um, and what we talked about doing was putting a link to all the comfort stations on every piece of material that we published about it. Even if it's only a list for District Three, we would still have the link for the full list, see, you know, here. And it might help to avoid some of that confusion in the future. But I just wanted to kind of bring it to everyone's attention here that if you see that kind of thing and there's an opportunity for us to improve the situation, just please pass it along. And, uh, between Troy and Steve and I know they'll, they'll get that figured out for us because it's, it's pretty tough to, to control what people are and aren't sharing on, on social media, right? So all we can do is our best to make sure the information gets out there, so.
I, I'll, if I can, just to, I look to the similar point. Was that the, the time when there was the extreme cold, I think? And so there was some question from members of the public, like, what were we doing to support vulnerable, vulnerable people who may be-
Yeah, I, I don't know if it was in that case. I'm, I'm thinking of the last big snow, I'm pretty sure. But anyway, regardless, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. Like, I just feel like, I know that we were sharing some stuff on comfort centers when we had that event.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, and just talking about how the typical hours of waiting period would be waived because of the cold. Um, but I do think that it did open up sort of like an area of concern for me in terms of what are we doing for vulnerable people who may not have places to live during extreme cold weather like that? Because, you know, we were talking about comfort centers, but the reality was is that the comfort centers, as indicated by Steve, were, were not, like, they're not equipped for overnight guests, right? And so, you know, I, and I, and I am confident that he, like in the correspondence, we've gone about back and forth. I know he's looking into what that would look like for us. But I guess we also need to be a bit careful with sharing information that may not answer the question that people are looking to have the answer to.
Right.
Right? Because I feel like that one, like, I didn't share that because we hadn't had any power outages. And then we did and then it was very short. By the time I got it up, it was, it was done. Because I'm worried about confusing people, so I, you know, I thought, I guess that's all I wanted to say about that is that, you know, I think we, we've identified that hole and I'm, I'm sure that's being dealt with. But I just, we need to also, if we're gonna share, we need to be careful that we're saying what's really gonna happen. And I know you had mentioned a couple of sites that were like on the list, but, well, they're not set up yet with the generators. So we do have some sites that are on these comfort center lists.
Right.
So they could get funded for generators, right? And now, but they're not quite ready, so, like, you know, again, I, it's good. I think sharing more information is better than not enough, but we just-
Yes.
Like, I know for myself, I'm trying to tighten up what I'm sharing to make sure that it's right.
Right.
And operational.
Yep.
You know, right, you know what I mean? Like, you know, I don't wanna say this is gonna open because it may not-
That was the conversation we had that came out of this.
Yeah.
Was an operational readiness of each of these sites and only those sites should be shared.
Would be the ones that we would correspond to the public, whether you or us or whoever.
What's difficult with this as well is those aren't our sites as well. So we're, we're trying to hammer out what is the relationship? And how can we trigger it once these agreements are signed? So that we do have the authority to say yea or nay whether it's opening or not, right?
Yeah.
And once we have that, then it'll be a much cleaner process.
Yeah. We do have verbal agreements in place with these places, but, you know, we are moving in the direction of kind of a more tighter written agreement and, uh, bottom line is we're relying on a lot of volunteers.
Of course, right.
Who, who, when you activate a comfort station, then they're at risk because now they're out on the roads.
Right.
And, you know, so it's, it's definitely a nuanced process. So I'll be looking forward to, to seeing how that kind of continues to evolve.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay?
It's keeping them busy.
I imagine, but it's keeping them busy. And I feel like we're, you're expecting another weather bomb or something, so, anyway, could be some more snow on the, on the go for this weekend, but.
But, yeah, going back to what you said councillor Melanie, uh, you know, just simply share what you know is, because, I mean, I shared, like you said, District One had five of them and then five minutes after District One had two of them.
Right.
I was like, huh, right? We're not ready, we're not ready, we're not ready, right?
And, and that's what his morning is on a lot of those, is personally calling these sites to say, okay, who's ready enough? And who's in a go state and who's not?
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, because we may have five or six to choose from, but only one or two may be activating or even have the people to activate.
Right.
So that's his ready upstate and that's what he tries to do before we post.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, any further discussion on the EMO cons?
Just to shout out to the fire departments, I think they're number one.
Yeah.
Honestly, they go above and beyond every time and they're, uh, they make sure that they're there before any other organization is there. And that's not putting any other organization down, but the fire department, doesn't matter day or night, they respond. And, and they're sitting there waiting.
Absolutely, well said. Okay, um, so if there's no further comments, I'll move us on to the next item on the agenda. Um, and this is, uh, the province's introduction of Bill two-two-five. So, um, uh, for those who haven't been following that particular discussion, I did, we did include some information in the, in the agenda package. Um, but just to give a little background, that bill was introduced in October, uh, this, of twenty-twenty-two by Housing Minister John, uh, Minister John Moore. And it amends the Halifax Regional Municipality Charter, um, so that a bylaw or part of a bylaw passed by HRM's council could be nullified by an order of the provincial minister if the minister determined that the bylaw would impact housing or development. I, you know, obvi- the, the, what they were trying to achieve with this, with this new act was essentially, um, you know, to do everything possible to address the housing crisis. It was specifically aimed at an HRM bylaw that was passed in last summer that could have, that would have seen the reduction of hours so that construction trades can work in a day because of noise concerns. But at the end of the day, uh, the way that the bill came out was without any consultation, uh, from, you know, with HRM, uh, by the provincial government. And it grants the minister, um, the authority to override what is essentially a lawfully established bylaw of the municipality. You know, Halifax Council, just like any of us, um, through the, through their charter or for us through the MGA, they're required to follow a process for bylaw creation that includes public consultation, um, you know, public notifications through first and second readings, um, and before it can be approved. And that gives, I think, that transparency and accountability that's critical to good governance. But, you know, essentially, this, this would bypass that whole process. Um, and so HRM and now in a letters, uh, a supporting letter from East Hans, uh, and as well as from Colchester Counties have, have asked formally that the legislation be repealed. Uh, because it does kind of go around the authority of the municipal government. The concern, of course, number one right off the bat, it was a lack of consultation. This was simply introduced. Um, and it is a provincial overreach into municipal matters. So there's been some dis- you know, discussion around that lack of transparency. Um, and it's just being out of step with some of the democratic principles that we, um, you know, that we as municipalities, um, abide by. You know, obviously, an additional concern is that, you know, we are negotiating, uh, the Municipal Government Act and the Service Exchange Agreement with the province. This bill, you know, could potentially influence the outcome and, you know, sets a pretty, um, I, I, I guess worrisome precedent around the lack of consultation with municipalities. So I wanted to put it out there for council to discuss, um, because I, although it doesn't directly impact our, specifically the way our municipality operates, because it was an amendment to the HRM charter, um, it's, it is, it is a, a worrisome precedent, um, that I think we all need to be paying attention to. Um, so I just wanted to open that for discussion and suggest that perhaps we also, um, you know, consider issuing a letter of support, uh, to, uh, for HRM's position to have the attribute, so. Any comments or questions?
I mean, uh, I, I would think every other day we hear about, you know, the housing emergency and so on and that. You'd hope they wouldn't overstep with this, but I'm not sure it's the worst idea in the world, really. Because we've seen how, you know, especially a large municipality like Halifax can, sometimes it may take forever to, to get these things through. Where they, they said, you know, they, they may talk about wanting to, to build housing, but it'll take forever to get anything done. And if the provincial government sees fit to override this feeling it's an emergency situation, I don't know that, I don't know that I'd have a big problem with it. Because I, I think we are in a severe housing shortage. We've seen homelessness, especially in HRM, shoot up dramatically the last few years. I think I wouldn't, I, I'm not saying I wouldn't change my mind on it, depending how it played out, how it was used, if it felt like it was being used too easily. Um, at this point in time, I think the provincial government is seeing a problem and, and maybe trying to, to find a way around it.
It's a good point. I, I definitely think it was coming from a good place, you know what I mean? There's no question. Um, I do think any time that the province is going to make an impact on municipalities, we deserve to be consulted first. And we saw the same thing with the property tax rebate.
Yeah.
This is not the first time.
I, I, I don't know, I tend to disagree with, um, Deputy Warden. I, um, again, everybody has boundaries and everybody has a place. And if you're not going to follow the, uh, you know, I, I agree that if the province needs to overstep, then, you know, sit down with the, uh, HRM and then have that discussion. But at the same point, um, it pretty much defeats the purpose of even writing a bylaw if the province at any time can walk in and do what they want.
Right.
So it's, it's almost, you know, you know, we'll follow your rules until we don't like it and then all of, then we'll just take over. So to me, that's, um, yeah, it's, I, I support sending a letter off to, uh-
And I mean, we could be, you know, we could be conscious of that, you know, the point you're making Deputy Warden, I think in anything that we did put forward and, and, you know, say, we agree with your intention to, you know-
If your intention is.
And we want, yes, exactly. And we want to work with you to, you know, resolve this crisis we're all experiencing, but particularly HRM, you're right. Um, but this is, uh, this is a pretty heavy handed tool.
I mean, if we, if we go back less than a year, you know, all those, uh, all those homeless people, they took apart their homes, they didn't just up and build a new one before they ripped it apart. So, you know, I, I'm living in a cardboard box, this is an A-one, but living without a cardboard box is a lot worse, I guess is the best way to say it. So, you know, I'm not saying I don't support them moving forward with housing or them, you know, implementing or, I guess, overreaching if they, if that's what they're doing. But at the same time, I, I think if they're sitting down with the municipality of HRM, um, or the people of the municipality, then surely to God, if they're looking to build extra housing, they're not going to get a, a fight from-
Yeah, I don't think it's as much the topic, because I hear both sides here. I don't think as much as the topic is what it is, the process, that's a concern for you and should be a concern for all of us, right? Is the process of the way it was handled, right? So, yeah.
Yeah, because there could have been a way for this to be a little more amenable. Like, it just could have went very differently, right? The same conclusion could have been reached with a different path.
Yeah.
But it wasn't explored. And I think it's, I think it's honestly disrespectful to the-
Yes, yeah.
To nature, to the, you know, to their councils, so. Um, so I would support, uh, writing a letter.
Okay.
Uh, just, you know, a- again, along the lines that we've ta- talked about here tonight in terms of, um, you know, that not happy about the process and, you know, understanding that the intent had, had, you know, had good, there was good intent there.
Yes.
But that the process was not acceptable and, and it just undermines everything, really. Because at any point, any minister could decide, you, you know, if the government could decide that any minister has similar powers to do, like, to do whatever.
That's right.
So that really we then have no decision-making ability.
That's right.
And that's not the point.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that would be my-
Yeah, but, I mean, I guess that is my concern is-
Yeah.
What's the next issue?
Right.
Where this is gonna roll out the same way?
Yeah.
You know, there, and it's, it's the-
Right, what's the next topic? And is it the same process being followed, whatever, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I would support a letter to be written in that regard.
Okay, so I'd just look for a motion, uh, then, to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Could I have a second, or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Diggan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that motion is carried. All right, um, so, uh, the next item I had on our agenda, it was about upcoming ATV rallies, but with the cancellation of the, of the meeting last week due to the storm, um, they're over now.
Well, there's one coming up in St. Peters at the beginning of March, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, so the message is the same, uh, you know, just around, um, congratulating the coastal riders uh, on a successful run a couple of weekends ago in Lordways. And, uh, and then, of course, the one, uh, here in Isle of Dam, uh, this past weekend. Um, you know, I think both runs were, uh, you know, a, a clear demonstration of, um, community spirit. Um, and I do, you know, I do know that all of those organizations are encouraging riders to be safe on the trails to, um, you know, and that our municipality has shared some information about, you know, from the RCMP about, you know, safety on, uh, when using ATVs and UTVs. And I know all those, I know all of the clubs, um, encourage respectful operation of the vehicles as well. So, um, my comment on that was see you on the trails this weekend, but, but it already happened. Anyways, but, uh, just wanted to say congrats to those who have completed the runs and, uh, and looking forward to the upcoming one in St. Peters and, and any others I can get out on. So it was my, my first Isle of Dam ATV run this past weekend, so.
Oh, excellent.
It was, yeah, it was pretty awesome. Let her out. Um, okay, so any comments or questions on that item? Okay, um, so the next item on the, on the agenda is, uh, from the Accessibility Advisory Committee and, um, looking, uh, specifically to seek council support to allocate funds to support activities in recognition of Accessibility Week, which is coming up towards the end of May, early June. I think the twenty-ninth to the fourth, something like that. Um, and, uh, you know, you'll see from the staff briefing notes, so thank you Shannon for that, um, that, that there's some information there about the activities that are, are tentatively being planned. My assumption is at this stage, we would defer this to budget, um, but certainly wanted to open it for comment or, uh, feedback from, I guess, the progress we've made so far on Accessibility Week planning. So, any questions or comments on that? Okay, could I have a motion to defer to budget, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you councillor Sean Sampson. Could I have a second, or?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion?
The only thing I would say is, you know, in the event that we don't have our budget completed at that point, I mean, I think we, we may need to do something else to, we'll be in budget discussions. I think we will have already decided to probably allocate money and how much that looks like, but-
Yeah.
So we, we may need to come back to it. Or, or is there a way that we can amend the motion where we would say that whatever decisions are made in budget deliberations, in the event the budget is not approved, would be, could be paid out prior to the approval of the budget? Do you know what I mean?
Yes, I think, and Jason, I, I think, um, you know, to you, Troy, to Jason, I, I, I just, I believe we had a situation like that in the last budget where we had, yeah.
Oh, usually big garbage, we always approve, like-
Exactly.
Our, our spring cleanup, we always approve that prior to the budget being approved.
So we would potentially maybe just have a motion at a later date if we wanted to specifically authorize that expenditure? Does that sound-
So how do you do it?
Yeah, you, you can do it two ways. I think, um, heavy garbage usually, I think, comes to council for a motion, but anytime we start our budget deliberations, uh, I think we look at it from some funding contribution scenarios where we just see count, uh, consensus of the budget committee.
Right.
So if that was one of those areas and you guys said, hey, let's allocate $5,000 to that, as long as there's consensus to proceed, we'd be fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, perfect, in anticipation of it all being approved, it's not materializing at the end.
I'll include it and then...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because I think that spring cleanup one is coming next council meeting.
It's coming soon.
Isn't it, Chris?
No one's allowed, like, if it was $5,000, that's not gonna be a deal, but if it's a hundred...
Yeah, whether next week or, or next month, either would be fine.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's already in the cycle to come to you guys, so...
Signs of spring!
Yeah.
Signs of spring!
Okay.
Garbage, okay.
Okay, so I'm good with that then, yeah.
Okay, so any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So that's, uh, it for the Warden's items, so over to you now, Troy, you had an operational activities report you shared with us.
Sure, uh, this is the Q1, Q2, uh, activities going on in, uh, all the departments, um, shared, uh, by, uh, myself and the directors of all the events that are, and activities that are ongoing and, uh, planned for these quarters. If anybody has any questions, some of these are already going, um, you know, going through the finance, the, um, the water and sewer bills are out, the tax sale, uh, that was discussed in this has just happened, uh, the vehicle purchase has been complete, uh, there's lots going on in recreation already, uh, the consultants are here now, uh, for the, the rec plan that's going on. Um, rec or trails? They're rec, right? Yeah, they're rec. Trying to keep all your projects straight.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we do have the casual working at the arena now, the canteen is going and has been going for a while, so, which is great, and I believe that that was really well-supported, and he was busy, busy up there, and the french fries were awesome.
[laughing]
Uh, we continue with bylaw, and again, the bylaw structure was, um, supposed to be fluid, we're gonna have two other bylaws coming at you guys next week that weren't even on the schedule, but because of the timeliness, they need to get in front of you guys, and I believe that that's what you wanted that committee for in the first place, is as these things come up, they need to come in, and one, of course, is, uh, a, a policy from you guys on gas tax, we're gonna have our first discussion on that, on how you guys wanna develop that policy and the parameters we wanna put around the gas ta, gas tax monies, and then the other one is on the, uh, storm, um, or the, uh, comfort center policy, uh, being developed by our EMO, uh, Steve Marcellus, so that's coming to you guys as well, to help us flesh that out. Okay?
That's it.
Um, and I think that's it for us, uh, a lot of that other stuff has been ongoing with the Cape Breton Partnership, we're working on the communications plan again, uh, the boundary review has been submitted to the UARB, you all saw that, uh, along with the letters of support, so thanks to those community groups that, uh, provided, uh, letters, uh, and all the people that helped with the engagement, so, uh, we'll see where that ends up, and I think that's it, unless you guys have actual questions out of the report.
Just wanna say that it's wonderful to have, it's a really great update, and, um, I know I, I definitely appreciate it, it's a really great piece of work, so thank you.
No, it's, a- again, it's just trying to demonstrate everything that's going on, all these departments are all very, very busy, um, but that's what we're here for, is to provide those services, right? So, uh, no, happy to share it, and, uh, we'll, we'll keep it updated, and some of these are mirrored on the action list, so again, a- as they get cleaned off there, they'll come off this list as well. Okay.
Okay. Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Troy? No? All right, perfect. Um, so, the next item on the agenda is, uh, community acknowledgements, and so this is where we always talk about our volunteer of the month, um, and this month, uh, for January was, uh, Remode Burke, uh, she is the chair of the Lordways Parish Council, president at many church functions, and a member of the 200th, uh, planning committee, um, takes a lead role at the Harbor Wars Event, which is a gigantic success every year and so much fun, um, and I know assists with a ton of fundraising activities and events in, in our community, um, she's, you know, whether it's Acadian Day Festival, the Christmas Parade, the Children's Party, um, so certainly wanna, uh, salute Remode for giving her time over the years and, um, and ask everyone to join in recognizing her hard work and dedication to the community, so I know, uh, Deputy Warden, Remode is a constituent from your region, and I didn't know if you wanted to add anything, because I, I know you've personally volunteered with this lady as well, so...
No, there's, uh, there's not enough can be said for the amount of time she puts in, but I know she wasn't happy about the attention of the recognition, so...
So she'll really love that you talked about it today.
So I'll, I'll, I'll just leave it there.
No, and I know that's not why our volunteers volunteer, but, um, I do think it's important to recognize them, but, but yeah, we'll leave it there. All right. Um, so the next item on our agenda then is we've got some correspondence, um, from, uh, Jason Martel, which we need to take some action on, um, so the first is the, uh, from the administration, Fortuary Deputy de Graff for infrastructure grant funds, it's a request in the amount of $15,000, and, uh, Jason has provided us with a, a memo kind of, uh, summarizing the, uh, the information, and just wanna open that for discussion, uh, from councilors, this would be a request for access to funds through, uh, the, uh, Canada Community Building Fund.
So, Warden, I'm just going to declare conflict as I help them with some of their financial matters?
Okay.
So I will excuse myself and return when you're done.
Okay, thank you, counselor.
Gotcha.
Counselor Melanie Sampson's declared conflict. Any...
Yeah, so if I may, Madam Warden, uh, first off, thank you, CFO Jason Martel, for your hard work on this, I know we've been dealing with, uh, with this group over the last couple of years, so I appreciate the, the work on the, on this file, with this group, uh, you state that it, it looks like everything is, is good and it would qualify for the CCBF, uh, funding, uh, I think, Madam Warden, we had allocated, uh, $50,000 in this year's budget, uh, for harbor development, and that would fall under, under that, so, uh, we do have a balance of 35,5 left, uh, I think we, we gave, uh, 10 and 45, so there is, uh, there is funds there, uh, to accept and, and approve this 15,000, so I would, I would look for a motion to, uh, to approve that, yeah?
Okay. Any other comments or concerns from councilors on this request? Go ahead, if you can, counselor.
Nope, I'm, I'm good, I'm just, I'm just laughing because Counselor Sampson's looking for a motion to approve, but I thought that was your job, but maybe we're changing positions here.
I'm gonna put a motion, sorry, sorry. Sorry, sorry, Counselor Dikton.
I was okay with sharing.
But I'll second that motion if Counselor Sampson...
Get ahead of myself.
Madam Warden, if you're putting the motion...
I'm getting ahead of myself, I guess, yeah.
That's all right.
Thanks for pointing that out there.
The report was so good, you were ready for that.
Yeah, yeah, that's really, exactly.
So good, yeah. Love it. Um, okay, so I think we have a motion and then, and then a second or, is there any further discussion on this item? Deputy Warden? Okay, so, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So the next item, yes, come on back in, please, Counselor Melanie Sampson? Okay, um, next item on the agenda is also regarding a grant request, this would be through our, our regular grant program though, um, it's a memo, uh, that, uh, Jason has prepared for us regarding the Bonnie Bray Seniors Club application, they are seeking to purchase a, um, defibrillator, is that what I mean?
AED.
An AED?
Yep.
Um, and that they've included the full cost at 1,689 dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, uh, normally, we do, you know, we have not been supporting projects at 100% is what I would say in, in this particular case, um, so we'll kind of open that for discussion, I'm, I'd be happy to use the remaining, I think it's 334 dollars left, or 37 dollars and 78 cents left in my district fund towards it, but, you know, even to do a 50%, uh, we would still need to prop, tap into, uh, to the regional funds, but it would open it for discussion, uh, from councilors to see what you think of this particular request.
Yeah, I, I think it's, uh, y- y- you know, it's a, a very important piece of equipment that honestly, we wanna see, we wanna see as many of these out as possible, um, I, yeah, I had the same thought though, when I read it, as you, that we generally don't support these type of requests at more than 50%, so I think we wouldn't wanna set a, a precedent and change that now, but, um, I, I would be, I, I, I would be in favor of supporting this at 50% with, you know, whatever it may be coming out of the regional fund, uh, minus whatever you'd like to put in.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I, I would echo those words, Deputy Warden, I mean, I think that's, uh, those are very important pieces of equipment that should be in, in as many places as possible, right? So, yeah, I would support, I would support that, uh, that approach for sure.
Okay. Any other comments on that?
Yeah, I, I don't know, uh, we're talking about a piece of equipment that saves lives, and, uh, I understand the Deputy Warden's comment, although I believe it wasn't back several meetings where we actually supported something more than 50%.
Yeah. I know we just haven't done any at 100%.
And, and, right, well, and, and I, I agree, I'm not saying I like the fact that you're using, you're using the rest of your money, uh, that puts a warm feeling in my heart.
It's not my money.
That puts a warm feeling in my heart.
That's yours' dollars.
But the, uh, no, but I, uh, I, again, I would, um, I know we're not doing 100%, but we have to remember what we are, you know, we support roofs, we support foundations, we support, uh, infrastructure, you know, this here is a, a life-saving piece of equipment, so the more we do have out there, I think the better, I know we do have to watch our money, but again, um, I would be willing to, uh, I guess, match your contribution, and then, uh, I, I have no problem making a motion that we do pay more than the 50% that we pay the difference of whatever's required.
To the full 100%? Is that what you're...
Well, it won't be 100% if, if you have 300 and I pay 300.
Right. So a 50% contribution on this piece of equipment would be 844, 845 dollars, um, about a 75% contribution would be a little over 1,200, 1,266 dollars, I'm just crunching some numbers here as I, as we discuss, so, um, so if we did...
So we're at 845, you put in 300, you said?
I put 337 dollars and 78 cents.
I don't know what I got left, do I have 337 dollars and 78 cents?
You certainly do, yes.
Okay.
You have 462 dollars left.
Uh, I'm ju, I'm, I'm just looking through our policy really quick right now, because I, I just, my, I understood that it was part of our policy that we wouldn't go above 50, so I know you made a comment about us funding others greater than 50, and I don't remember any of those, do you remem, do you remember who you're referring to?
If, if it's, if it's somebody's community development, uh, harbor development, then yeah, that's a different situation.
Yeah, you're probably thinking of the Isle of, the, uh, the Nor, the Norfarge, which also went through the Canada Community Building Fund, not through our regular grant program.
Right.
Yeah. Um, so, so I guess I would defer like to...
I believe the Deputy Warden had one in his area back a month or two ago that we funded, um, but maybe it wasn't over 50%, I'd have to go back and check.
Perhaps this...
No, I, I do know, I do know we had, we made a comment, or I remember Deputy Warden making co, a comment that it was the first time that he's looked for money, more or less, out of the fund.
Okay, so Schedule A of the policy, which I think our CFO is looking at right now too, and I just found it, it, it specifically says in Schedule A that these grants, each one of them, um, other than sponsorship, so it says like, infrastructure 50% of costs, activity 50% of costs, um, C1, which is physical activity, recreation, 30, 50% of costs, C2, instructor facilitator 50% of cost, sponsorships have a maximum of 500, Canada Day maximum of 3,000, uh, regional health in general maximum of 10 per application, one per year per registered organization, so...
And that was the one they, they applied under.
Okay.
It was under D, right?
Yeah, D.
Right.
Yeah.
So this one is what they applied as well, is it?
Yes.
Under the, okay, so then that one is not limited to...
Right.
50% is that? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so, i- in general, I, I also support, supporting this, okay? Um, but I will say, like, uh, whenever, uh, it was in the fall sometime, I went to the AGM for St. George's Channel Hall, and they have an AED there, but their pads needed replacement, and so at that time, I had reached out to, um, CAO at the time, and I think that, um, the Director of Public Works and I just chatted a little bit about it, and the reality was that we have no funding other than, I guess maybe this would have worked, right? To, to be able to support co, and their comfort center as well, with continuing to keep these pieces of equipment working, so I think, you know, they could have applied for this, but they were applying to get their, their roof funded, but I guess what I'm saying, all of these conversations are just bringing us to the bigger picture of the comfort centers, and so I think that we need to consider what is, what we would call standard equipment that the county is willing to...
Support.
Support, like, to either put in or support in some way, so that we can have, like, a standard, a standard across all of our comfort centers.
That has been established by the province for them to be deemed, and that's part of his policy coming to you guys.
Okay, perfect, perfect, so, because like, for me, that was a concern for me, right? They also, they don't, in the same way that Bonnie Bray cannot, you know, afford to do this, you know, but it's a real, it's a life-saving, saving piece of equipment...
Yeah.
Likewise, St. George's Channel couldn't, you know, couldn't afford to replace the, the pads on their machine, which basically meant it was useless to them.
I spoke with them on Sunday at the breakfast, and I believe that they have been able to do that.
Good, great.
I'm, I'm, don't quote me on that, but I'm pretty sure that's what Doug mentioned, so...
Good.
I was very focused on the Isle of, though.
Yeah, yeah. Sart lady, sart lady. Um, so anyway, just like I said, that's, that's fine, like, you know, however we just, whatever we decide to do with this, but I'm, I'm happy to hear that that's something that'll come to policy.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so kind of rounding back to our discussion here, um, I'm just wanting to kind of see if we, you know, wanna come to a decision on it, so would our folks supportive of a 50% or a 75% or...
Yeah, well, I think that changes the discussion, if it's under that type that we're, like, I, I was thinking the same way as Counselor Sampson, that...
Right.
I didn't wanna go against policy on that, it wasn't anything other than that, really.
So what the CFO, uh, Martel, what is left in everybody's, like, regional, district-wise? So in District 1 and 2, there's 800 left, and District 3, there's 1,838 left, and District 4, 338, District 5, 2,800, and Type 4, 5250, for a total of 11,826.
Right. So, uh, so for us to do about a, uh, 75%, like, I'm just, I'm, I'm just picking a, a number out of the air here, if we wanted to take, um, the 337 from my, from, from the District 4 funds, and then, I think, Count, Counselor Dikton, you mentioned from yours as well, um, and then, I think, 592 additional dollars from the regional fund would, would get us to the 75% of 1,266 for the overall cost of the defibrillator.
So if you wanna go 150 each, Counselor D, instead of taking 300 of yours, I can do that, and that way...
Sure.
save some, you know, just in case we're, for rainy days.
Snowy days.
I have snowy days, yes.
Snowy days.
Yeah, I didn't want to say that word.
No.
You said it, not me.
Okay, um, so I'm just wanting to redo the math on that a little bit.
Feels like we should pass the collection plate for 150 going around the table.
I think it's, yeah, I think, you know, when you're talking about important equipment like this, if we can put them in as many establishments as possible.
Sure. So with a contribution from District 1 of $150, District 2 of $150, from District 4 of 337.78, and from the regional fund of 629, that would put us at 75% of their request for $1,266. Is that reasonable?
So for the difference of a couple hundred dollars, would it be fair, just, I'm just throwing that out there, for the regional fund to pay the difference of the?
To do the 100%?
Well, minus.
I think we're setting a bit of a precedence here, which is, which is, I think, could be challenging to us as a whole. We are coming to the end of our Type 4 money, number one. And number two, there are a lot of organizations who I'm sure would love to have the same, same type of equipment and we could find ourselves with request after request and then find ourselves in a, in a precedent set, you know, how could you pay all of their AED and now you're telling me you can't pay all of ours? And at $1,700 a piece, it can add up very quickly and we all saw the list of comfort centers. There is a lot of them.
Yeah, and, and I do agree. I also would say, in that same, in that same breath, you know, we supported a $10,000 or $15,000 roof for renovation and if somebody approached us now for the same thing, we couldn't support it.
But those were 50 cent dollar, like.
Yeah, they were, they were 50 cents.
We're talking 50 cent dollars, so that's, like, the reason why we have these is so that we can spread the wealth as much as we possibly can. So I, I'm not going to argue about 75%. Personally, I would be more comfortable with 50%, even though that's not the type. But just in terms of precedent setting.
I was thinking more like 1,000. If, if you hit a number instead of a percent, you know, just say 1,000 towards the cost of any, you know, next, next month, that machine could be worth 2,200 or next year, 2,200, right? So 75% of 2,200 is now more and more and more, right? What if you said, you know, 1,000 for every application or whatever.
And that may be something that comes up in these, in the, in the, you know, our bylaw policy meeting next week may fix all of the problems of the world, but, but today we have to worry about what our, you know, what our precedent setting is, so.
No pressure.
So I would suggest then that, you know, in the format you're describing, you know, of contributing a thousand dollars towards it, it would be 150 from Districts 1 and 2, the 337.78 from District 4, and then it would be $362.22 from the, from the regional fund. And I, I may have those pennies a little off, but for round years, that would bring us to the thousand dollars. Folks be supportive of that? Okay, so I'll ask for a motion then to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Sean Sampson. Could I have a second here?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Diggan. And so I'll just restate the motion for the purposes of the minutes, so it's that we support the Bonnie Bray Seniors Club grant request to the tune of $1,000 consisting of $150 each from Districts 1 and 2, 337.78 from District 4, and $362.22 from the regional fund. So any further discussion?
No, I'm good with that, I think. Just to clarify, I had to double check it to Counselor Diggan's comments. The, the grant request from District 5 in September was supported at 50%. However, they were asking for, I believe, two thirds. So, but it was only supported at 50%.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Warden. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right. So the next item on the agenda, we have a couple of pieces of correspondence really that are just for information only. So the first was a letter of thanks from St. Martha's Regional Hospital Foundation, recognizing our donation to that organization each year. We had an additional piece of correspondence from Eastern County's Regional Library regarding announcement of a new board chair, which is of course Claire Rankin, who is our representative around that table. We thank him for his service there and for taking on that leadership role. And then additional correspondence from the Regional Library about Shetty Camp Public Library Service Update and they do have a new location there, so. Any questions on those items? Can, we can direct to, back to Laura Emery, the executive director there, so. Any comments or questions on those?
The only, the only one I would have was, is Claire in conflict by being our representative and the chair at the same time? Does it?
No.
I don't think there's any decision-making process that really conflicts him, right?
There would have to be some municipal representative that would take on the chairmanship, so, yeah. I think it's fine.
That's good.
Yeah. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the review of checks. Any questions on the review of checks, councilors? Okay, then the next item on the agenda is the addition. Items added was regarding the Straight Richmond Community Health Board regarding the Community Wellness Fund Celebration. And I'm having a bit of a time trying to find that here.
Thursday, Thursday 23rd?
It's just not loading well. So Troy, could I maybe ask you to give us a quick?
Sure.
Background around that.
Straight Richmond Community Health Board, Community Wellness Fund Celebration, an invitation for the Warden and Council to attend the 2022-23 Wellness Funding Celebration. The Community Wellness Fund Celebration will take place this Thursday, February 23rd at 6:00 PM in the Shannon Studio in the Port Hoxbury Civic Center. And that's it.
Okay.
It's just to see if anybody had interest in attending.
So I mean, I certainly can try to make it. I am in meetings in Port Hoxbury that day anyways, so it wouldn't be too difficult, I don't think, to sign in. But if anyone else would like to go, I'd certainly welcome that.
I'll apologize in advance, I'll be flying to Alberta, so.
I see, I see, all right. Okay, thank you very much, Troy, for that.
You're welcome.
My computer was having a.
A moment?
A moment, yes. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is question period. And so councilors, again, we weren't able to livestream this evening because when our reschedule for the meeting happened to a Tuesday evening, it limited the, there can only be so many live streams from Tellil, I believe, at one time. And they did, they already had a pre-planned livestream event for this evening, so we weren't able to do the livestream. They are filming and will certainly broadcast on Tellil and on YouTube at a later date, but it means that we won't be accepting any questions by the fall for question period this evening, which is, I know, unusual. And as we have no members of the gallery, unless the folks from Tellil would like to ask a question. I think that will bring our question period to a close, so. And apologies to the public on that. We'll certainly be reinstating our livestream as soon as, as soon as possible, which will be at our next regular council meeting on Monday, so. So now I'm going to ask for a motion to move us in camera.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Diggan. Could I have a second here, please?
I'll second that.
Deputy Warden, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Thanks a lot, everyone, have a good night.
Thanks, girl.